Good evening Superintendent West, President Hill, members of the Board of Education. Thank you for your time this evening. As required by state law, we are required, prior to the adoption of the 2526 budget, we are required to have a public meeting, a budget hearing if you will, to disclose our tax rates to the community. So we'll be starting out with that this evening before we move on to the budget amendment for the 2425 year for the general fund and then walk through the 2526 year. So this would be a summary of our 2025 26 property tax millage rates for our non-residential properties. For the general operating purposes, we will be levying 18 mils consistent with the current year. On primary resident exemption properties, so our residential properties, this is what we also call our hold harmless, would be more commonly known as. Also for general operating purposes, that is a millage of 4.3836. This is the millage that does follow the number of pupils in our school district. It's dependent upon property tax values as well. So as property tax values go up and we lose students and our enrollment declines, we do expect to see this millage continuously go down. The commercial personal property is a general operating millage and that is the hold harmless plus another six mils, so 10.3836. And then on all classifications of property would be subject to the debt service millage for our bond, to pay back the bond, as well as sinking fund millage. So the debt service millage is not subject to the HUDLE rollback annually, but the sinking fund millage is. So we are going to levy the 2.75 mils on our debt to fulfill the debt service obligations for our bonds for next year. And that will change every year depending on the obligations. And then the sinking fund was subject to a rollback again this year. And you can see that the rate that we are, that we'll levy is that .6907, bringing in about $3.4 million to meet those sinking fund capital needs. This is a five-year non-homestead millage comparison that would summarize the various millages on our non-residential properties. You can see here consistently with the 18 mils, the 2.75 for the debt. But as I mentioned, you can see from 2425 even back to 2324 when the sinking fund millage was renewed, that has been subject to the HUDLE rollback. So this year for 2425, we're at 6.6935 and for next year, we will be at .6907. And then again, the same comparison but to our residential properties. And so you can see the impact of declining enrollment here and how that impacts the hold harmless millage rate. So we're at .4 or 4.5998 for the current year and that is reduced to .4.3836. The debt millage remains the same as well as the sinking fund millage. I will pause there for, that would conclude the actual public hearing of the tax rates. If there are any questions from the Board of Education at that point before we move on to our budget adoption. Okay, great. So moving on to the general fund, which will be the primary focus of the presentation this evening and the adoption. Our general fund, as you are all aware of, is the main operating fund of the school district for our K through 12. I'll actually add on to that and for special education, that would go beyond grade 12 up to age 26. This would be the operating fund that funds all of those activities here at Bloomfield Hill Schools. As Paul already mentioned, trustee Cohen here, that we did spend quite a bit of time last Thursday also at the finance committee, prior to that, walking through and talking through the amendment for the 2425 year, for the final amendment, as well as the 2526 adoption. But to summarize that, back in December is when we initially amended the 2425 general fund budget, when we knew what our funding was from the state, our per pupil count. We have not had significant changes in the count. And we haven't really had that much significant activity as well for the change in the activity from the December activity until now here in June. But I do want to just point out a couple of areas. So back in December with the information that we knew at the time, we did expect that we would close the year adding about $276,000 to our fund balance, ending the year with about $23 million or 21.2%. We are projecting that we will be adding $780,000, so an additional $500,000 to the general fund fund balance, closing the year out closer to $23.5 million. The most significant changes, if you were looking at the revenue, from 108.8 million to 110.9, so you can see that's a $2 million change, is really in the area of two things. There's inverse relationship between our property tax collections as well as the state aid funding. So when property tax values change, then the state makes this whole. So you can see a switch between the decline in the local source revenue and then an increase in state. But also at the time, back in December, we were aware we would receive some funding to reimburse certain employees for a 3% healthcare contribution this year. We didn't know what that amount was just yet and we hadn't received the funding. We know that now as well as the final allocations of some categorical grants, which would be our state grants. And so those are the most significant changes there in that state source revenue. And then the majority of that 2.6 million is actually offset with almost a million dollars in benefits with reimbursement. So you can see down below the line, we're adding 1.6 million to expenditures. About a million dollars of that is that reimbursement. So this is where we expect to close out the 2425 year, adding $780,000 and closing the year out with a fund balance of about 21.3%. That takes us to 2526. At this time, we are not aware of what our budget is from the state. We are highly dependent on the state of Michigan. The majority of our funding does follow the pupil. And at this time, although we do now have the different proposals from the executive branch, the governor, the house, and the senate, the three branches have not yet had the opportunity to come together and negotiate the difference and provide to us what our financial package looks like for 2526. Our year does not align with the state's, so the state's year does begin October 1st. We are required by law to adopt a budget for next year no later than July 1st. So at this time, we take a look at all of the three different proposals and, you know, put forth our best, and I would say also our most conservative, projections of what next year's funding may look like with the information we have. We do know what our tax base is. So we are projecting that we will, the 18 mils, we will generate just under 17 million. And from our hold harmless millage and based on the FTE that we're projecting for next year, which is just over that 4,900 mark, we do plan on collecting about 19 million in hold harmless revenue. We've been really fortunate for the past couple of years that we have been carrying on our money markets and our CDs, an interest rate of about four. It ranges depending on the investment security. But we've been really fortunate to be, you know, collecting around 4% to 5%. Conservatively, we anticipate that the money market funds, that interest rate will go down next year. And so we've reduced that local source revenue estimate by about $500,000. Now, we will look at this again, this will remain fluid. If there are not changes in the interest rates, then going into the fall and going into that December amendment, we may be able to ramp, bump that allocation up again. Part of the discussion on Thursday was around the removal of indirect cost revenue, really a change in the reporting of indirect cost revenue. So this $800,000 is built into the 2425 local budget item. That is essentially a transfer in from our center program at the recommendation of the county. We are going to be reporting that not as local revenue, but an actual transfer in from the center program. So although we remove $800,000, still about a million carries forward and then we'll talk about the remaining amount of the transfer as well. From a state perspective, we are a declining enrollment district. So I do feel like I've been on, you know, press, repeat, press, repeat for the 18 months that I've been here. But we are a declining enrollment district. We do forecast receiving district-wide funding for about 4,900 kids. So that's actually 4,920 based on our cohorts as of spring. When we know our count in October, we will update that and marry our, you know, our count up to what our actual funding is. But currently, that is a decrease of about 100 kids. I want to point out a typo on this slide, so we'll update it and get this updated as well. The foundation is expected to be 13,835. So currently, we receive from property taxes and the state of Michigan, we have a foundation allowance of 13,443. We are anticipating a target foundation allowance of $10,000 plus our hold harmless funding of the 3,835. That's a $392 increase per kid. So, sorry, that's my fault and we'll correct that. The next slide is actually correct. I just want to point out, albeit 392 is right around a 4% increase and albeit certainly significant because of the declining impact and that impact to the district is still a reduction of 1.1 in operating revenue from the state. We do remove non-recurring revenue and also non-recurring expenses across the board. So the non-recurring revenue is 7.5 million. These are those categorical grants that I just mentioned. The offsetting expenditures that will be removed from the expenditure base is 3.5 million. So just 3.94 million of that revenue, which is that reimbursement of the retirement rate, is not expected to carry forward into 2526. Federal revenue in total, we don't have too many significant changes there, but just to point out that the last of the COVID funding dollars have run out. So we had three months this year to spend the remaining dollars, July, August, and September. So we do remove the last of the COVID funding that we utilized for some summer school and additional supplemental services to our kids. But we are also in receipt of the Filter First grant and those two essentially offset each other. So we will recognize the impact of Filter First as well as the offsetting expenditure. Inter-district revenue, the primary source to the district is the PA 18 Special Education Millage. Oakland ISD collects that on behalf of the local districts and then passes that through. And we do know that is increasing about $500,000. We do have preliminary allocations from last year, so we've increased that. The transfers in, we are recommending a transfer in from our center program. This looks a little bit different than the past. So 1 million of it coincides with the 800,000. So whether we had recorded it as local revenue, the estimate was a million dollars. The additional 1 million is a one-time transfer from the center program fund. The center program fund does account for the Wing Lake activities. We are a fiscal agent at the county level of two programs over at Wing Lake, but also our DHH program. Really as a benefit, I would say as a benefit to operating the program on behalf of the county. The county does require that we carry forward in that program for emergencies, capital needs, 7% fund equity. Their formula for fund equity actually looks a little bit different than our fund equity formula. It's based on prior year expenditures. It removes certain operating activities that we would generally consider in our base. And as a benefit, they do require us that we carry 7%. We've been carrying just under 30%. So the county, you know, has indicated that it is completely appropriate, very common practice of other fiscal agents to transfer the residual fund equity out of that into our general fund. Now, I just want to keep in mind that just for everyone at the table and to understand, it's not a transfer to subsidize the cost of general education. It is a benefit to help subsidize the costs of our general fund, special education costs. Because we do carry quite a few costs, you know, to support our special education students, the funding that we receive from the state and from federal sources is $3 million less than the cost of educating those students. And so this additional transfer will help subsidize the cost of that base. Recognizing it does look a little bit different, but providing some why behind that. This is a five-year summary of our foundation allowance as well as the projected 2526. You can see here that from 2021 until now through 2425, that foundation allowance has increased from 12,364 to 13,443. We do break it out into the three different buckets to show the per pupil, the per pupil equivalent of that foundation allowance. So they're all various shades of Bloomfield blue. So I wish I could say purple or green, but if you're looking at the, if you go, you know, in the bar graph, the darker of the Bloomfield blues or teals, the 6,580 for 2526 is actually the amount that we expect to collect from the state of Michigan. The middle graph there, the middle section, the 3,420, is the per pupil equivalent of our local operating taxes. So we do not collect $13,835 from the state of Michigan on top of the operating property tax. It is an equation that does factor that we will assume and receive a certain amount of local revenue from property taxes. And then that top bar is that $3,835 of our hold harmless revenue. And then I'd like just to highlight that 52%, 52.5 is dependent upon voter approval for the operating millage. Likewise, here is the state aid membership history for the past five years as well as our projected. And you can see that impact of declining enrollment right here. 2021 has two different numbers. The state, 2021 was that full fiscal year that we went into after the pandemic. And there was a, they called it the super blend formula. So it was a different formula to fund us. You can see that we actually, in the traditional funding, would have been funded for 5,378 students, but the state propped us up that year and we received funding for 5,511. And you've seen that decline since 2021 through 2425. We're currently being funded for just over 5,000 FTE and we're projected to lose 97 going into 2526. This does not appear to level off until 2036, 37-ish, another 10 years. This is another one of those calculations and projections that remain very fluid. So in the fall, when we know what our October count is, we will also update our projections going into 2627 and beyond. We do another count in February. It's our spring count. I guess technically it's still winter, but it's the spring count for the state. And then we will again update our projections. So if we were to look at this a year ago, we were anticipating that we would be closer to 40, we were anticipating we were, would be closer to about 4,800, maybe 4,850. So I know in both of those counts, we gained 25 FTE fortunately in the lower grade levels. And so that does carry forward and change those projections. So we will maintain those, but we've been very, our methodology for the projection and the count has been fairly accurate with a very low percentage variance. The other side is, would be the expenditure assumptions. We have five main categories of expenditures. We are a service organization. The majority of our costs are people. And so we have salaries and the benefits that follow. Purchased services, which would be the contracts to third-party organizations, also people. So think about our custodial contract as well as repairs and maintenance costs follow this bucket. And then we have supplies and capital outlay and other. So salaries and benefits make up the majority of our budget. We have adjusted salaries going into 2526 to reflect known contractual agreements. We have recognized the savings from attrition. As folks retire and they are at the higher end of the scale, if we do need to replace the position, there is an assumed savings from a teacher that is retiring at the high end of the scale compared to bringing in, you know, a newer teacher right out of college. So there's a savings there. Additionally, we have savings from attrition by looking at our enrollment and what our staffing needs are. And so we've been really fortunate. You know, you've probably heard Superintendent West and I, even Deputy Superintendent Keith McDonald, say the tricky part about losing 97 students is they aren't all in the same grade level, in the same building, in buckets of 25 perfectly. They're scattered throughout the district, which makes it very challenging. It isn't a one-for-one-like ratio, you know, that for every 25 kids, we lose this many students and it's not perfect. We do, we were in a position this year that with lower, less incoming elementary students, we have the need for fewer elementary sections. And we had quite a few elementary retirements this year. And so we were able to achieve some attrition savings at the full value of a contract without laying off any employees. So the savings from a replacement, we had to replace a speech and language position, but also the savings from not replacing students are also recognized in this budget here. I do want to point out that we have three, three different contracts that are currently being negotiated right now and have not yet settled. So one of them, and certainly the most, the most significant and largest of our contracts is our teacher contract, followed by our building administrators and then our early childhood teachers as well. So we are currently bargaining with all three of those groups we have not settled. So there is some cushion, some estimates, forecasts of what we might be able to predict, just as we did last year with ParaPros, built into this budget. It will not be perfect. And so I do anticipate then, once we know what those contracts will look like going into the fall, we'll have to update our salaries for, and the benefits that follow for those contracts. Speaking of benefits, the average blended retirement rate, there has been a change this year in the state aid act and the legislation, which reduced our retirement rate, certainly not to the amount that we were hopeful for. But our average retirement rate this year is 28% compared to 30.5 for 2425. And then the, we are subject to PA 152 for our healthcare and that base did increase 4%. Our open enrollment is a calendar year and so we'll realize 2% of that employer healthcare increase. There will be some savings from those folks that have retired or new folks coming in, perhaps maybe at a single contract rather than family. But we anticipate those savings will essentially just be cost neutral with the impact of the 2%. The purchased services, the most significant and notable increase to the purchased services line would be our custodial contract. If you recall, I do believe that was at the, was it the April? Or I think it was the April meeting, the Board of Education approved the award for, we will be, you know, entering into a new service agreement with a new custodial contract provider. And that contract and whether it was the existing vendor or our new vendor, we were going to realize a significant increase to our general fund and our ancillary funds. The impact to the general fund is $600,000. From a, from a supplies line, it does look like on this slide, when we copied the pictures, perhaps their total instruction is actually supplies. So Excel may have been funny with me, so we'll take a look at that. But from a supplies line, there are not significant changes to supplies or outgoing tuition, just to be aware of that. That's why I didn't highlight that. But you should be aware as we, as I mentioned with the, with a one-time revenue, if there was an offsetting one-time expenditure, regardless of the category, salaries, benefits, purchased services, supplies, outgoing tuition, that's all been removed and the impact of this is here. So for 2526, when we put this all together, you can see that the total revenue is 106.2 million, a reduction of 4.7 million compared to 2425. From an expenditure perspective, 110 million. We are projecting 108 million of expenditures for 2526. I do, I did include the 2324 audited actual amount. I think it's important to see that, you know, for 2526 compared to two years ago, you could see the impact of the reduction in revenue, but we've also made efforts to reduce our expenditures. And we are still projecting expenditures less than we had two years ago in 2324. There weren't too many one-time expenditures buried in that amount, still $500,000 left less. But the impact of that is a deficit of next year, just under 2 million at 1.9 million. So we are making a recommendation and asking the Board of Education to approve a, you know, a strategic use of fund balance for 2526. We are closing out the 2425 year with just, we are anticipating 23.5 million. Our fund balance policy, as you're all aware, is 15 to 20%, closing that year out at 21. So we're in a very healthy fiscal position and, you know, we are really, what this fund balance policy does, as well as the fortunate amount that we are able to do, is it allows us to absorb reductions. It allows us a longer runway to make tougher decisions going into the 2627 year as we really align our budget with a new strategic plan, especially in a time of unknown right now. We do not know what our state funding is. There's uncertainties at both the state and the federal level. And we are fortunate to have a healthy fund balance that does allow us to not make rash decisions right now and cut programming to our students for the 2526 year. And with that 1.9 million, we do still expect to end the year at about 21.5 million in our fund balance, just still hovering at that 20%. So looking ahead, I've mentioned these all throughout the presentation, we are declining student enrollment district. We have presented a budget that would articulate a structural deficit, which would require us to align our budget priorities with a strategic plan that we will be developing during the 2526 year concurrently. We will aim to continuously normalize staffing. You might hear it as realignment, but normalize our staffing to match our enrollment. One of the areas too that we will be focusing efforts on next year is is a review of our various fee-for-service programs that are living in our general fund, that are operating at deficits as well, and making some recommendations as administration to what those programs might look like in terms of staffing and from a fee structure, so that they are at least cost-neutral. And then looking ahead, I do anticipate in the summer, probably at some point in July, we will know what our budget is for the year. In October, we should know what our staffing, sorry, not our staffing, but what our student count is. And then we will bring forth, based on that information, a formal budget revision to the Board in December of 2025. However, prior to that in your Board updates, we will keep you apprised of any developments in terms of our budget. And with what we know right now and what our forecast is, what does this look like for Bloomfield Hill School? So it will not be the first time that you will hear of what is going on in 25-26, but formally, we'll make an amendment in December of 2025. Special revenue funds, as you're aware, we do have certain ancillary funds separate that are, for the purpose, they're all developed for a very specific purpose. And we carry them outside of our general operating funds, such as food service, the Center Program, International Academy. The two up at the top, the International Academy and the Center Programs, are the programs that we are the fiscal agents for at a countywide level. And then we have four right now. We have four special revenue funds that are specific to Bloomfield Hill Schools, our food service fund, the community services program, the co-curricular endowment fund. We are planning, when we have this conversation next year, this will go away. We're planning on spending that down in its entirety in 25-26. And then our Hills activities account would be our student activities accounts that we must now account for in our financial statements of the district. We spent a fair amount of time having conversations and amending these budgets for 24-25 in April, so we are not presenting a budget adjustment for 24-25 to the Board of Education in June right now. So the April amendment will serve as the final amendment for those folks. Oops, I just spilled, that's embarrassing. Okay, I'm gonna move this. Anyways. My husband always tells me that I am the worst with lids, and I laughed my lid off. This will not surprise him, he'll get a good laugh out of that. But I don't want to, I really don't want to break any technology. I know, no, I'm good, I'm good. I mean, hey, it could make things interesting, right? Okay. So going into 25-26, we do approve those, or the Board of Education does approve those at a consolidated level. However, in all of your information packets, you did receive the 24-25 and the 25-26 budgets for those individually as well. Thank you, Mr. Shulkin. Thank you. It takes a village, is what I say, raising our children, right? Thank you so much. Although I do know someone that would approve a new computer or pay for it. Yeah, so going into 25-26, just for your knowledge, we did, we, Bloomfield Hill Schools, did present draft budgets to the county. We actually need to do that for 25-26, to the county for the center program. So we did update, the 25-26 budget does include certain assumptions for the center programs, but we do expect that those programs will look different in the fall as well, based on the number of pupils in the program, the kids, as well as where we end up with our teacher's contract. And then we did develop the IA budget with some precision, and we did talk about that in April as well for 25-26. That will also change because the funding is dependent on this funding from the state of Michigan for that tuition program. What, we didn't make significant changes to where the food service budgets. We do anticipate, although the House budget does not include funding for the free or reduced lunch for all students in the state of Michigan. We did build that budget, assuming that we will have that program next year. And we do have some capital needs that we recognized. From a community service lens, carried that budget forward, really just carrying forward the 24-25 budget into 25-26, some uncertainty around certain programs. And as we worked together in the summer to talk through those programs, their programs here in community recreation, also certain programs at the Farm and Nature Center, I do anticipate going into next year, that will look different. And so we'll spend some time in the fall and in the winter bringing forth an amendment to that as well. And then the Hills account is really an accounting requirement, so we carry that forward. Generally, the funds that we bring in are the funds that go out. And we do plan on spending down the, we do plan on spending down the remaining fund balance sitting in the endowment fund. And then again, the most significant net change in fund balance, you can see the in was the transfer in from the center program in the general fund, and then that would be the transfer out. The majority of that would be from the center program, and then 70,000 of that is between food service and the community recreation. So reducing that combined fund balance in the special revenue funds from 6.6 million to 3.4 million in 25-26. And then that concludes, special effects and all, the 25-26 budget discussion for the Board of Education.